It's now seven o'clock and I'll pause the order. The November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen Warren County Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. And we did have a change later, or late this afternoon, I guess, for Cooks Riverside LLC. Request from the applicant to place this on hold, so we need to modify our agenda for that. On the motion in the second.
Mr. Chairman, I move with adoption of the agenda as amended.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanted to let anyone else know who's here for that public hearing, that the Board of Supervisors public hearing that was scheduled for next Tuesday evening has also been canceled.
Okay.
So we're sending out a letter. It went in the mail late this afternoon, but I'll be receiving that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes of October ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of October ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public presentations. Public presentations are limited to issues that are not included on the meeting agenda. It is intended as an opportunity for the public to give input on relevant planning issues and not intended as a question and answer, period. Does anyone wish to come up and say anything at this time? If no one comes forward, we will move on. Next item is unfinished business. And since the applicant with Backroom Brewery, I've done work for them in the past, so I am going to abstain from this and hand the meeting over to Mr. Myers.
Okay. It's unfinished business, item two thousand nineteen oh nine oh two, Backroom Brewery LLC. Request for conditional use permit for events associated with a microbrewery. Property is located at one fifty Ridgemont Road, identified on Tax Map eleven as parcel sixteen B and zoned agricultural.
Ms. Logan?
Ms. Clifton with Backroom Brewery is requesting this conditional use permit in order to use her brewery facility to host large events such as weddings, reunions, company outings, birthday parties, and other large events. Property is located on Ridgemont Road off of Reliance Road. Property is approximately twenty acres in size, zoned agricultural, located in the North River Magisterial District. As the Planning Commission members, we held a public hearing on this request as of meeting last month, and it was postponed in order to get Ms. Clifton time to meet with her neighbors who did attend that public hearing. I've spoken with her, and she has done that. Staff is recommending the following conditions if the Planning Commission does approve of this request. The applicant shall accommodate guests to the Planning Department showing the parking area for employees and guests. The applicant shall meet all DEDAT and Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements. Any outdoor lighting fixtures shall be full cutoff and pointed downward. And parking for the event center shall be located a minimum of fifty feet from Reliance Road. I'm happy, is there any questions if you have any? Ms. Clifton is due as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I will remind anyone who is here that we did have our public hearing on this last month, and it is closed. The public comments are closed. Okay. So, I remember we had the discussion last month with some of the neighbors complaining about one of the events going like a little bit long and lights shining into the windows and that type thing.
It might be good, Ms. Clifton, to come up and address some allegations with the neighbors.
Please.
Good evening.
For the record, Ms. Clifton, would you please give your name and address so that we have it on our records?
Certainly. My name is Billy Clifton. I'm the owner of the property in question. The address is one fifty Ridgemont Road, Middletown, Virginia, two two six four five.
Right, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I'd like to first thank you all for suggesting at the close of the public hearing last month that our neighbors and we get together and sit down and talk about the concerns that they had. As you knew then and still do, I had absolutely no idea in the world that there were any issues or concerns. The neighbors had never approached me and never expressed anything other than complete support and satisfaction with what we've been doing. So, sitting down and talking to one another was exactly what needed to happen, and it has happened. We had a lengthy discussion, actually immediately after the public hearing last month, and we agreed that we would get together in the following weeks. In the following weeks, I and my front of house manager, Mr. Brown, who's sitting back in the back with my husband, we visited all three of the neighbors, even the one neighbor who chose not to attend the public hearing. We sat down and we talked about every single thing that they had a problem with. And as it turns out, I think they just felt a whole lot better being able to talk about it and let their feelings be known and to be reassured that we are still the same good neighbors that we've always been and have nothing but a serious desire to resolve any and all issues that might exist. So, we truly did talk about every single thing, and I think we resolved every single thing, at least to the best of our ability. Now, you know, we may not be able to make people move off of Ridgemont Road as fast as Mr. Sargent would like them to because the headlights are shining towards his front window, but we'll certainly try and we'll do everything that we can to make sure that traffic moves along and gets onto Reliance Road safely. Michael Sargent, who did not attend, was the one neighbor who had expressed that he had been able to feel the vibrations. He didn't really hear the music, but he could feel the bass. And so, we have installed soundboards inside the structure to absorb the vibrations, and if we need to install more, then we'll install more. We think what we've done is adequate, but as always, we're willing to revisit and entertain any type of conversation that our neighbors would like to have with us at any time. And the other, Mrs. Logan just expressed, is our commitment to make sure that the cars park back from Reliance Road at least fifty feet. And I think that'll satisfy, or at least address, the issue of people's voices being able to be heard and even some of the headlight issues. So, that's what we've done. I mean, the talks that we had with the neighbors lasted much longer than what I just described. You know, we've had four meetings, and so we probably spent as long as three or four hours with these people. They're nice people, we're nice people, we're all reasonable people, and I truly feel that we've addressed the issues and established a path of communication for any further issues that might arise.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One of our prior Planning Commission members when I first came here was always up here saying that you need to talk to your neighbors and resolve things before you start getting into recourse with the county and this type of thing, and guess he's got a point. After that, does anyone else say anything?
I think I'm okay.
All right.
I'm good.
Anyone ready to take a motion now? Make a motion now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. Mr. Chairman, I move the Planning Commission forward this application to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of the Backroom Brewery LLC for events and activities associated with microbrewery with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Second. Second motion is made, properly second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say aye. No one abstained. I just have it. We'll forward this on to the Board of Supervisors. And then pass the gap back to the chairman. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and we will go to item B. This is R. two thousand nineteen dash ten dash oh one, Front Royal, Warren County Economic Development Authority, a request to amend the Warren County zoning map and rezone approximately two point zero three acres from residential one to commercial and to rezone approximately zero point eighty-five acres of the adjacent unnamed right-of-way areas to commercial. The property is located off Reliance Road, near the intersection with Winchester Road, identified as Tax Map twelve A, Section one, Block thirteen, as lots one to fourteen, and located in the North River Magisterial District. And I believe that's Ms. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to amend the Warren County zoning map and rezone approximately two acres from residential one to commercial and approximately twenty-eight-five acres of the adjacent unnamed right-of-way areas to commercial. The EDA purchased this property in two thousand sixteen. The DEDAs attached in your packets. There were several trailer homes on the property that have since been removed, and the property is now vacant. This two-acre property abuts a nine-acre parcel that contains the ruins of the former Robert McKay Jr. house and outbuildings that's currently owned by the town and county. It also abuts a three-and-a-half-acre parcel owned by the town that contains the McKay spring and a point nine-five-acre parcel that's on the corner of Reliance Road and Winchester Road that's owned by the town and county. So this parcel, these parcels, they make up the two acres, these small parcels, and they are not right on the corner. They sit back and they abut Reliance Road. The EDA is requesting this rezoning because there has been serious interest in commercial development on the property over the past year, more so recently. At this point, the two-acre parcel and the right-of-way areas are still zoned residential one, and they are located in the middle of the commercial land. This property is shown in a conference of plan to be commercial in the future. In your packets, you have a statement of justification, a parcel map, a completed application. There's also a proposed proffer statement that the EDA, they have and they're going to be reviewing, and we'll have that all together by the Board of Supervisor on the public hearing. Let's see, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. The request was sent to VDOT and the County Department of Utilities Department. VDOT is familiar with this site from the rezoning of the adjacent properties in two thousand twelve, and a lot of their comments refers to the entire site. So, actually, the proffers that we suggested for the EDA mirror the proffers for the Town and County commercial site that's just adjacent. And it limits the commercial activities, and it also talks about stormwater regulations, anything that's developed on this property will have to meet the Department of Environmental Quality Regulations. There will have to be a proffer from the spring that's required by the state. And we also, with the, I've had a lot of employees from residents about the ruins of the McKay house and the proffers for the town and county that is on the adjacent parcel. It's not part of this property, but we did have a proffer for a half-acre preservation site around the ruins. And then we would have the proffer from the spring, which isn't part of the site either, but it all is near. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thanks. Let me catch all the questions.
And we have our presenters from the EDA here as well. If there's questions, Mr. Logan.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, sir, not right now. Do you have any questions for Ms. Logan at this time?
I do. The previous proffer would carry forward for the historic preservation of the.
So that is one property that's adjacent to this.
Exactly.
And that proffer will stay. That one's a property that is recorded.
Yes, that is recorded, and it stays with the property.
Yes.
That was my question.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Everybody good right now? Okay, we will open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak for this or against this, and we'll open it up if anybody wishes to speak.
I don't know if I was signing up for that. I was kind of late.
I already had the papers up here, but nobody had signed up. If you would just come forward and say something.
Do that.
See, if my comment, please say your name and address the matter.
My name is Michael McKay. I'm actually a descendant of Robert McKay. I actually don't live in Warren County. I live in Winchester. But when this issue was raised and somebody had posted it on our family website, I just thought I wanted to come down to see what efforts were being made to preserve the ruins of the site to make it some kind of historical monument, because a lot of people in my family are really interested in this. And I'm sorry that nobody has never posted anything here before that, but we are interested in seeing that it gets preserved in some way or another. You know, even though the house is gone, you know, the remains are still there. What needs to be done to ensure that that doesn't get erased or destroyed?
That will have to be addressed. So technically, that area of the entire development is not part of this resuming application, though.
So that area was, would you want me to address that now?
Yes, please.
That property was rezoned in, I think, two thousand twelve. The town and county own that property. And in those proffers, there was a preservation site preserved around the ruins and the outbuildings. So it will be preserved. We don't know what the plans would be for it. I think we've stabilized the structures, the ruins as best as we could.
That's good to know.
And then outlet and firework.
The ruins of the chimney that's a little bit to the further south, because that was also on the McKay property, and burned years ago. If you see it on the side of the road, you drive down five twenty-two, there's like a little Civil War marker next to it.
Yes. We are just as much in pain with preserving that property as you are.
That's good. The person who sent me the message made it sound like it was, looked like they were just going to, they were just going to bulldoze everything down, so I just wanted to make sure that the people knew that we are concerned about it.
Absolutely. We also, we're very familiar with the history of this site and the history with the McKay site, Thomas McKay site, that mod on the right. I'm not the resident historian as Mr. Winley is, however. With that property and that house as well, we were able to get an acre of land proffered to us during that rezoning with that home as well. And we brought that back to its historical, best as we could.
Basically remediated and done any damage control.
That can be done to that structure.
And I suppose that Shinnah Valley, Badger Foundation, about both sites, and we've talked about maybe doing some interpretive signage at this site, just so we could just have the history of it documented for people who do visit there.
I've got plenty of pictures on my family website of the old house before it burned, I mean, inside and out, so.
Well, absolutely, and we'll meet with you on any information available. So that's what we've done so far, is we've had the proffers, the preservation.
Your name is Taren Logan.
Yes, sir.
So you have an email address?
Yes, I'll give it, I'll get my card, please.
Oh, because I wasn't going to be able to stay much longer, but I can email you, you know. Is it on the Planning Commission's website?
Mr. Logan will read it.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'm just as concerned, and it's good to know that something's being done for it.
Thank you. Anyone else who would come to speak for this application? If not, we'll keep that. And nobody, I'll close the vote here, and we can discuss things further, or we can have questions for the applicant if need be, and go from there.
Take a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take a motion if I have to.
Mr. Chairman, finding that the requested rezoning is appropriate for public necessity and is a good thing in practice, I move the Planning Commission forward this application to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation to approve the applicant's request to rezone, change the rezoning classification of the property identified on Tax Map twelve A, Section one, Block thirteen, parcel one through fourteen, from residential one to commercial six.
Second. A motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing, Z. two thousand nineteen dash ten dash oh one, Warren County Planning Commission, in ordinance to amend Warren County Code, Section one eighty dash twenty-eight, to include landscaping and horticultural services to be permitted by right within the industrial zoning district, to amend Section one eighty dash eight to add a definition of landscaping and horticultural services, and to add Section one eighty dash forty-nine to include supplemental regulations for landscaping and horticultural services. I was a little bit of a mouthful there, but I got through it. And I believe that's Mr. Petty.
Mr. Chairman, this is amendment to Section one eighty twenty-eight, as you stated, and one eighty dash eight. As again, like we stated last month, our office continues to get comments about landscape services throughout the county, and these amendments would allow this additional use in the industrial zoning district, and provides appropriate screening and operations that would not adversely affect the nearby properties. The attached ordinance has remained unchanged from last month. That was agreed to, and I will be sure to give that copy to the secretary to be reflected in the minutes. I did want to make a comment. We received some feedback on two things. One was if this could be adopted in different zoning districts, really what we were looking at is this really fit the industrial zoning district as a byright. Also, finally gives us this definition, so if it comes up later, we can always add it to another zoning district as needed, but it really fits that intent for the industrial district. There was also a comment just about the setback requirement for storage of mulch and other items. It's at a hundred feet. Again, we use the same supplemental regulations as firewood processing for storage of the same type of materials. Again, like last month, I talked to the fire marshal to see if there are any ICC kind of codes that regulate that. Nothing as far as setbacks, but they do have requirements for piles and storage. So we felt that the hundred-foot was consistent with other code sections and just also a good practice. So if you do have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. It has been properly advertised as well.
All right. Anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak for or against this application? No one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing, and we will leave it up to the commission. Questions, concerns, comments, motions?
Seems like a reasonable idea in industrial district. I think it's a good fit.
Totally agree, especially keeping a bunch of nursery stock and planted and with mulch piles and this type of thing. So, Mr. Chairman, finding the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare and good zoning practice, I move the Planning Commission forward the proposed amendment to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation for approval.
Second.
A motion in second. Okay. Last chance. Any other questions, comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is authorization to advertise. Two thousand nineteen dash eleven dash oh one, Stephen Aaron, a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. The property is located at eleven seventy-four River Ridge Drive in the River Ridge on the Shenandoah subdivision and identified on Tax Map eleven E as Lot five. The property is zoned agricultural and located in the North River Magisterial District. And that's Mr. Winley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. The property owner recently purchased this. An end statement of justification, due to some of the additional costs that he incurred during the initial renovations, he would like to request this used to provide some supplemental income to offset those costs. It would also allow him to use the structure for their own personal use, but also rent it out on a short-term basis. Property would be managed by a local commercial property management company, as the property owner does live in Maryland. This property had not had any previous conditional use permits issued for the agricultural zoning district or any previous zoning violations during, his application was forwarded to our building official, and Mr. Bean states in his comments that the dwelling had never been issued a certificate of occupancy. The applicant has been notified that he has been working with building inspections in the Health Department for the appropriate permits that are going to be required, and hopefully by the next meeting, he will have those issued. He also is working with his title company regarding insurance for that, so it may take a little time, but he should be able to get that addressed. Due to steep terrain, topography, and woodlands of this particular subdivision, and the fact that the lower portion is in the special flat hazard area, most of these lots in the subdivision are used for rural residential-type purposes, you know, larger residential homes or, and the short-term tourist rentals provide transient lodging taxes to the county and are typically used by tourists visiting this area. So this does comply with the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter six, Economic Development Chapter, and Goal five, and the promotion of tourism objectives of the Comprehensive We have sent requests for comments to the POA. Mr. Aaron had spoke with the POA president. We're waiting to receive those written comments. It does meet the one-hundred-foot setback from any adjacent dwelling. The dwelling, closest dwelling is three hundred fifty-two feet to the east. I'll forego reading any of the conditions tonight. We'll address those at our next meeting, at the public hearing, but I'd be glad to answer any other questions, and Mr. Aaron is here to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions at this time?
I'm a little concerned about no occupancy permit issued at this time. And you expect that to be taken care of?
Yeah, apparently, and this was explained to me by Mr. Aaron, apparently the previous owner never completed. He kept extending the building permits and extending the building permits, and at some point in time, he just stopped. Mr. Aaron was unaware of this during the purchase of the property, so he was working with that title insurance company to address that issue, to cover any costs that he might incur in bringing the property into compliance and having that occupancy permit issued. He has, as I said, reached out to both the Health Department and the Building Inspections Department, and is being guided by them on what permits are going to be necessary and a timeline, hopefully, to get that done.
Okay. Are we putting the cart before the horse on this?
No. Actually, I'll mention this. I did put a condition on here. I was going to read all of them, but number six, the applicant shall be issued a certificate of occupancy for the dwelling from building inspections prior to being issued a certificate of zoning from the Planning Department for their business license. That's if the Board of Supervisors approves it. Okay. So we have about two and a half months for that.
Do you know when year the home was originally permitted?
Uh, gosh. Do you know when the home was built?
There's a bunch of different permits and timelines on it. They started construction in two thousand two, two thousand three, and speaking with Paula in the Building Department, she pulled all of the permits off of it, and what they were doing was they were just renewing their building permit annually and having inspections along and along, and in two thousand eight, they just stopped renewing their building permit altogether. And so, this wasn't discovered in the title discovery. It still needs final on gas, electric, and plumbing, I believe. But the family's been living there, had been living there for, you know, fifteen years. I had an inspection done on the property. The inspection passed, so I think all that needs to be done is just to have inspectors back in.
back in and fix any minor things that they might find, and then they can issue the final permits for it and the certificate of occupancy. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, I do have a little piece of advice.
Yes, sir.
On some of those older permits, sometimes paperwork gets a little mixed up. Look inside the door of the electrical panel. And if it had a final electrical, it's got a sticker there. And if it had a final building, it's a sticker there. I haven't seen... Yours probably didn't quite open up, but I've seen a few of them went a little farther back, and they couldn't find any record of it here, and it was just a simple, come in here and look at this panel. Here's my final electrical. Here's my final building.
Thank you very much.
So good luck to you. Maybe they'll be in there and they'll speak things up.
Yeah, exactly. I appreciate it. So yeah, to your questions, I'm trying to get this done as quickly as possible, because obviously I won't, since it's your life, you see a lot of buildings.
Right. I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions? And we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with the planning commission authorized to propose a conditional use permit request for advertisement for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing will be held next month. Next item is 2019-11-02, Asa Andrea Fals, a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. Property is located at 653 Whitney Lane in Timberland Manor Estates subdivision and identified on Tax Map 36D, Section 1 as Lot 2. Property is owned agricultural and located in the South River Magisterial District. Mr. Windling.
Yes, these applicants have stated in their justification that they recently purchased this property and have used it as a weekend getaway, holiday home for their family and friends. They would like to make some rental income off the property in order to offset the taxes and cost of maintenance of the property as a second home. This property would be managed by a caretaker who resides locally. Property is not located in the floodplain at all. Property has had no conditional use permits or zoning violations, and again, due to the topography and woodlands of most of the lots in this subdivision, most of them, again, are used as rural residential uses. This use is compatible with the comprehensive plan for the economic development chapter and the promotion of tourism objective of the comprehensive plan. This was permitted for a four-bedroom occupancy, and... Well, I should say four-bedroom, eight-person occupancy for their septic disposal system operation permit. There is a POA. We will... We have requests to comment from them, and the property and structure does meet the required setback of 100 feet. It is 334 feet to the closest adjacent dwelling to the east. Off we go, again, reading the conditions until the public hearing. I don't believe the applicant is here, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions at this time?
Nope.
All right, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the planning commission authorized to propose a conditional use permit request for advertisement for a public hearing.
Second. Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Z 2019-11-01, Warren County Planning Commission in ordinance to amend Warren County Code, Sections 180-10 and 180-40.1 regarding the major recreational vehicles and equipment. We'll get to that. Mr. Petty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you will see an amendment to 180-10 and 180-40.1 of the Warren County zoning ordinance. We've also added some definitions to 180-8. Our office frequently receives, it's probably one of our biggest complaints, is inoperable vehicles. Our code clearly defines it as a motor vehicle that you would drive on the road, and it's very limited and vague in relation to recreational vehicles and recreational equipment such as boats and trailers and the like. So this ordinance has kind of allowed us to clean that up a little bit, clarify some of that, some of those conflicting sections. 180-40.1, as you'll see, we've amended from camping non-commercial to major recreational vehicles and equipment. It really addressed that and the intent. So to kind of go through this code to help you understand it a little bit, in 180-10 and accessory structures or accessory uses, I'm sorry, we've eliminated B, which talks about major recreational equipment in residential districts. So that would preclude currently anything industrial and agricultural or commercial. And those are agricultural is one of the areas we find most of the complaints coming from about multiple campers, inoperable campers and/or boats and their trailers. So we have moved that into this new major recreational vehicles and equipment and tried to define where you can store these and how many you can store them. You would still be allowed the byright one inoperable motor vehicle per 180-10. This new 180-40.1 would allow for two inoperable major recreational equipment items, so essentially two campers. The reason we would say inoperable... Inoperable is defined as something that can legally not be driven on the road, and we took into account if you have an agricultural piece of land where private use camping is byright, you would be allowed to keep your camper there, and it may not be operable, but you may use it for your agricultural use or private use camping or your hunting camp, and it doesn't really move. In talking, and we've also talked to the health department to make sure that people are appropriately pumping theirs out, whether it's through a designed septic system or they are contracted with a third-party commercial. So we're in contact with the health department to make sure, even if it's inoperable, that these folks are still, if they're using the camper, it's used properly. The other item, and if it were to be in the special flood hazard area, that has not changed at all either. You would not be allowed to store any inoperable recreational vehicles or motor vehicles in the special flood area, hazard area at all. Some of these codes are still the same. Again, we've moved that one section out of 180-10 into this section for parking and storage in residential areas, which is a concern. So they should not be used for living and sleeping. That's still for a permanent basis. That's still the same. No parking. If it's not stored in a garage or carport or other building, it shall be located at least three feet from any other buildings, and not located in the front yard except in the driveway, and it must be 10 feet from the right-of-way. So we're still keeping a lot of these, and for the residential, it's just really to address these concerns that come up in agricultural zoning districts. And again, really defining what recreational equipment and recreational vehicles are as well. So it's a little different, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, this is to kind of help our office clarify when we get complaints about people with multiple inoperable boats that have just been sitting there, inoperable recreational vehicles. We didn't really have a mechanism to really enforce that, only the motor vehicle part.
All right, thanks, sir. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Petty, at this time? Thank you for the explanation, and I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with the planning commission authorized to propose a text amendment for advertisement for public hearing.
Second. Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Next item is commission matters, and we start with commission members. You've got anything for us this month?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Martin?
I'm good.
I'm moving on. Mr. Henry?
Just say congratulations. I think we've got a couple of new board members, and congratulations to Ralph for his new spot.
Thank you.
One piece of advice, when you sit in the chair, make sure it's locked.
It doesn't stay locked.
It doesn't stay. That's right.
You'll go down quick.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see the county attorney. Where's Eric?
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Good. I don't have any updates at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the planning director?
Let's see. We've received demolition permit for the former Capital One Bank in Irvin Commons. So that permit is in our office being reviewed, as well as a building permit for the long-time tenant building that will be going there. So this is on the corner in Irvin Commons. I'm excited about that. It'll have three spaces in the... It's going to be a little strip area with two restaurant spaces, and then the middle space, as yet to be determined. I think it's going to be a retail space. It's what's shown on the site plan. So that's moving along. We've got comments from all agencies on that, and the engineers revising the site plan currently, while the building permits are being reviewed, so. That's moving along, and Taco Bell is almost complete, and Irvin Commons Shopping Center as well. And we did receive an email today from the attorney from Crook Run West, Crook Run West, actually withdrawing their application. So I think there was an article in the paper from the town council meeting last night, but the county did receive that today. So that will not be moving forward. And we received also a building permit for five additional storage buildings at the Mini Storage on Strasburg Road. We haven't heard anything about that site lately, but I've been meeting with them for about over the past year about their plans for the property, so we just approved that. And I've actually had two more meetings set up for possible storage facility on different properties, so that seems popular right now. We're reviewing our sign ordinance. That'll be coming forward. We've got to get that updated soon, a section of it, so that'll be coming forward to probably the new planning commission. But also, I want to invite you all. We're going to do the board supervisors' meeting in December, which I believe that's December the 10th, is the second Tuesday. They're going to have one meeting in December. So we are going to present... We have resolutions made for the outgoing planning commissioners, so if you're able to make it, that'd be great, at 9:00 a.m. that morning.
I'll tell them.
Well, darn. Well, I'll give you yours at the meeting in the following week, the planning commission meeting. And if you're not able to make that, I will have them at the planning commission meeting, the last one, so. On the 13th, I believe, or I get my dates mixed up. I'd be the ala...
Ala.
Yeah, so if you're out of town that entire week, then we'll set a date for the following week.
I'll change my plans.
That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Planning staff? Mr. Windling?
We continue work with property owners who live in the floodplain, special flood hazard area regarding some of the violations that were cited during the FEMA visit. We've gotten some good cooperation from them, and we continue to work with them and try and be a positive community outreach to them in providing them sources for, you know, flood vents and anchoring of their structures. So we're moving forward with that as best we can, and right now, that's all I have. Thank you.
So we're still seeing an uptick in permits in the zoning office. Kind of slowed down a little bit, felt like when school started, but in the last week, it's really picked up. I know the building department is really busy with a lot of permits. Leaves are falling off the tree, so we're getting a lot of calls from neighbors, so it's busy season in the zoning office for that as well. So we're, like I said, we're staying busy. And then, as Ms. Logan mentioned, we are going to look at the sign ordinance, and we'll continue to look at other ordinances, so the two remaining planning commissioners will keep you busy with that, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, we have nothing else on the agenda as far as items go, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Second. Put in the second. We are officially adjourned.